Okay, being 7:00 PM, I'm going to call the meeting of the sewer commissioners to order. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise their hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge such at this time. I see Jamie.
Yeah, I'm recording.
Amy Perkins, okay. Flash photography is prohibited during, it's not applicable, we're in Zoom and if anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line, 1-929-205-6099, and Zoom meeting ID 817-6356-5834. Password, all caps, SUER. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and vote by the Board of Sewer Commissioners in the Select Board. All right, do we have a moment of silence to recognize our troops? Public safety personnel. Okay, salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, divisible, Liberty, and Justice for all. Right? Does anybody have the vision in minutes in front of them? I do not. I have just my agenda. I get a bunch of papers everywhere.
I'll start the vision.
Thank you, Peter.
Born is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It's a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the right of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Born embraces sex and education and offers the citizens a healthy active lifestyle.
Mission, Peter, if you have it maybe?
I have it. I can do both if I have to.
I have the mission too.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Okay, Born will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Born will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving on. So we have the Born Scenic Park is our first item on the agenda. Do they need to call their meeting to order for this?
Yes, if they have a quorum.
You have a quorum? Born Scenic Park.
Hi, this is Joe Henderson. Can you hear me?
I can, Joe.
Okay, great. I don't believe they're holding an official meeting or anything at this point, so I don't know that they need to call anything to order. I'm just, so I'm here to represent them if, and I can speak to this item when you're ready.
Please go ahead, Joe. That would be great.
Sure, sure. So Joe Henderson with Whorsley Witten, representing the Rec Authority. And we are here to, number one, just kind of go over our progress since we were allocated flow. I think we had provided an update maybe six months or so ago, and since our last update, we have been working to advance to the project to construction. And they are anticipating starting construction before the end of this year for this phased connection. And just a couple of the items they're working on and have done is received conservation approval. Part of the project is within their jurisdiction, so we went in front of the conservation and reviewed the project with them and got a negative determination. We, you know, we're preparing the construction drawings and the bid package that will be going out in the next few months. This project will be publicly bid. The Rec Authority is also looking to hire an owner's representative that'll be overseeing the work during construction and lastly, they are also working with a grant writer to to find, you know, funding for the project. So they're looking at different funding options and have been going through that. So that's kind of our update on where we're at. And I think the second point of the agenda item was the development charge, and I think the idea here was just to potentially open up the conversation on whether the commission would consider a reduction. We've been kind of looking at the fees and specifically the the portion of the development fee that's related to the frontage of the property. It was just a little bit unclear on our end. It was based on 1,500 feet or so of frontage. And I think we're just trying to get some clarity on that and if we would were to provide some information and, you know, something to the commission, would they consider any type of reduction in that regard?
All right, well, thank you for that. So I guess what I'll do is I'll go around the Select Board first and see if someone has some comments or anybody wants to respond to that. I'm totally not, I'm not, I think Matt might be the one that may need to chime in on how the allocation is divided with the frontage. I'm not up on that bad language, so maybe Matt, you could talk a little bit about that or?
I can speak to that, yes.
Sure, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the way the frontage, the acreage was calculated was the frontage of the roads along the eastern side of the park on the west side of the bridge. So because the park is spread over multiple, over one parcel, over a large area of one parcel, parcel, excuse me. We drew a line on GIS around the parts of the park that will be within the sewer area of those 91 camping sites that will be within the sewer area. So the acreage was made by that GIS map, and the frontage was the line along the bridge, kind of the longest part of the road, which would be inside the campground. We, the map is currently in one of the files. We haven't gotten back yet. The map was created. So I don't have the actual map that we use with me, but it was created at one time.
All right, and I think I'll go around again. Sorry, MJ or Select Board want to have some comments here for Joe?
I have.
Peter, go ahead.
Yeah, Missy, I think when it comes to the adjustment or the abatement of the sewer development charge, I think this will be precedent setting. We haven't done anything like this before. So I think before we consider something like this, we need to really do our due diligence on it and take our time with it before we make a decision, not just be rushed one way or the other. Now, don't get me wrong, the Born Rec Authority is a great agency. It's done a lot for the community. It creates jobs. It creates money for the economy over there. I mean, so that goes without saying, but I'm just saying that it's part of the overall big picture, I guess, still that we need to just have a discussion on this in more detail before we make a decision one way or the other. But that's just an opinion on my part.
Thank you, Peter. MJ, I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, aren't the sewer development charge is based on a formula that's part of our regulations and so it sounds, from what Matt said, that he was careful about his calculation about the road frontage applicable to the part of the park that was being developed and the part of the park that was being sewered. I mean, this is in lieu of a betterment fee. It's buying into the system. We have infrastructure. We built a $9 million plant that is going to be supporting, you know, almost 10% of the daily flow is going to be going to scenic park. So I agree with Peter that we have to be careful about setting a precedent and making sure that we do what's right by the sewer users to charge equitable fees.
Thank you. And Maria, I see your hand is up. Go ahead.
I'm just gonna, I won't repeat. I mean, I think precedent's really important when it comes to setting a precedent with regards to how we calculate and formulate these types of fees as per our, you know, regulations. Matt, my question to you then is looking at the GIS, I mean, that was, you know, pretty accurate in that line that you took with respects to this calculation?
Yes, it was. It was done in conjunction with the engineering department also, so we both, we both worked together on it.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Jean, anything? Y'all set? Okay.
Yeah, I just would be saying, saying the same. I completely back up what everyone's saying.
Yeah.
We definitely have to take our time with this one.
Okay, yeah, and I think I'll just go as well, and I think, you know, that's where I was with this. I think we, we need to take a good look at it. As, you know, everyone else so eloquently said, we do have a precedent and we do have a formula that's based on our regulations, so we do have to consider that even with the importance and the respect we have for Born Scenic Park and all of that. So do we have any other comments?
If I can just add one last thing, if that's okay, and I think it was just, we weren't, I don't think the idea was to say to use a different way of calculating it. It was just what the actual frontage would is for the park. So maybe that was just a question of whether we could maybe revisit that with Matt and then to, before we make a, you know, a final determination.
All right, appreciate it, Joe.
Thank you.
We'll add it for future discussions so that we can view it carefully and put it on for another time.
All right.
Or Matt, you wanted to add, think you're all good there, just in case?
Yeah, so I'm all set for right now.
All right, thanks so much. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
As well. All right, we're at the FY26 proposed budget. Who is taking this on?
I can speak to it, Melissa. This was really just kind of a quick update following the Select Board presentation on the budget. At that time, we were still considering SRF fees to Wareham under the capital charges. And we had mentioned verbally that we were going to be able to take some of those fees off going forward. So the the budget you have in front of you right now is with that taken off, is with the SRF funding for the for the larger SRF program in Wareham, I'm sorry, being taken off. So the, the way the budget is sitting right now, it's $1,614,247. We actually believe that will go down slightly, slightly more also. Erica spoke with me today about the town of Born's SRF loan being a little lower this year too, the payment this year being a little lower. So we might even see another reduction on this budget too. So we don't foresee any increases, but there may be some slight reductions prior to town meeting.
All right. All right, great. You did a really good job. It's very clear. Does anyone on the Select Board have any questions regarding the budget? Let's see. MJ, yeah, sorry, I was waiting. I looked like you were looking for your hand. Go, go ahead. Oh, you're on mute. You're still muted.
I got too many screens open, looking at the budget and then looking at finding my screen with, then finding my raised hand. So are you asking for a vote on the budget? Are we going to do this at a later date? And then if we're going to vote on the budget, when are we going to vote on the use of retained earnings?
So I believe we would vote on the use of retained earnings when you vote the rates next year.
No, you have to vote that. It's part of the motion that has to be made at town meeting. The use of town, the use of retained earnings is part of the motion for what's appropriated at town meeting. So we need to do that before we vote, it needs to be part of the motion. So I just want to make sure we think about that. I'm, uh, I want to be careful about not shocking the rates just by totally removing retained earnings. So I just want to make sure we have that discussion.
Do we want to vote this closer to town meeting where there may be some more slight adjustments to the budget?
That's what I think, I think we should do that. We weren't, we weren't prepared to vote on this this evening. I was not aware of. So it was an update, as Matt had said, so we could always do it at the next meeting.
I'm fine with that. We can, well, we'll have another sewer commissioners meeting before we finalize the warrant. I'm, thank you for like adjusting the budget for the SRF debt. And we'll just, I just wanted to make sure that we had a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Matt, as always. All right. Hearing none. Anyone else have any comments on the budget? Sorry, move on. All right, so FYC is FY26, proposed capital requests.
So this is also just kind of follow up to our previous conversation. We had put a projected budget in the, in the presentation of the Select Board and the Finance Committee. And we also had to make adjustments to that because we deducted that $100,000 from the Wareham SRF. So this budget is projected out to FY31. As we talked about previously, if we decided, well, I know the plan is to do the grinder pump project in one, one big shot. So there will be fees, you know, there will be debt service fees accompanying that. I think the discussion, well, I know it hasn't been voted on, but we're kind of looking at 10 years would be what was kind of discussed. So within this projected budget, we have the the calculations based on either a 10-year ban or 10-year full debt service. So as you, as you can see, what we tried to build was adding about a 0.005% increase to the overage fees over, over the years to try to offset the fees to the rates. So as you can see, with all the debt coming on, the rates are going to continually go up the next few years, over the next six years. Even adding to the overage, even adding to the rate, making the rate for the overage higher, we're definitely going to see increases over the next six years to the rate pairs.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions on that from the Select Board? Go ahead, MJ.
We're looking at the sewer enterprise fund analysis sample projected budget.
Yes.
Looking at, okay. So I appreciate this, like trying to like think creatively. It's all subject to change. I don't think that the second part of the SRF thing is going to come in at the same year as the first part. But one of the things that I've been thinking about and kind of would like to have happen is you've made some projections about users coming on based on some projected users. What would be really helpful, I think, is if the allocation spreadsheet included a column for the number of users associated with the project. Because that's a really important number to have in the back of our mind. If a project has two users, it's not that big of a budget impact. But if it has 160 users, which I think the the, the new project on if, if some of them are like 160 or some of them are 100. So I think that would be really useful information and to help us understand where some of those other calculations are coming from. But I like the fact that we're looking at it and I appreciate the work.
Yeah, really great.
Thank you. We will add that column.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, MJ. Anyone else? All right, anyone in the public in the meeting, questions? All right, hearing none, moving on. So our next agenda item is D. It is the Hideaway Village Low Pressure, Blush, Low Pressure System Upgrades Project. I know Matt wanted to give us an update on that, so here you go, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a follow up to the last conversation we had on the Hideaway Pump Project. So at that time, the board voted to approve the upgrading the two pumps using the the ARPA funding for $377,000. Where we kind of left off, there was still kind of up in the air if the board may want to move forward with doing the upgrades to pump number one and bringing an article to town meeting to fund that. So I didn't know if we wanted to have a conversation on if we want to just stick with the, with the ARPA funding for this project or if we wanted to consider moving forward anything at this town meeting to fund that. From that last pump, that wasn't, there wasn't enough funding to do. So I just, I kind of wanted to get the board's take on, on this conversation possible.
Okay, before I speak on it, go ahead, Select Board, anyone? Thoughts on bringing this to town meeting for the other pump or just doing as we agreed with the ARPA funds? No comments from the Select Board? Okay, go ahead, MJ.
I was waiting to see if someone else would raise their hand. Um,
I'm trying to raise my hand.
So, Emre, you want to go first? Because I don't always want to be the one talking. I mean, yeah.
I, yeah, I'm trying to find my hand. I'm, you know, trying to split screens, so the hand doesn't come up.
Watch this, watch that.
Reduce the screen. Uh, what, what is the deadline date for ARPA funding to be used?
We had to have the, we had to have the approvals in by this past December 31st.
Okay, so is this money included in that allocation, so-called allocation of spending for ARPA money?
Yes, so this was the last of the ARPA money for the town was going to be used for this project. So we, we pretty much used all of it to do the two pumps.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's money well spent. And, you know, to continue using ARPA funny through this project.
Well, I guess the
excuse me.
But I guess though, to finalize the project, we would have to go to town meeting for an article.
Correct.
Yeah.
And with the ARPA as the funding source.
No, no, the, the funding source would be free cash. So, so the first two pumps that we approved were going to be fully funded by ARPA.
Oh, okay.
The way we bid it was, we bid three pumps and there wasn't enough to fund all three pumps when the bids came.
Right.
Discussion was if we would go to town meeting and ask for free cash or another source of funding from the sewer enterprise fund to fund that last pump upgrade.
Okay.
All right, I'll let MJ go. Go ahead, MJ.
Okay, so we, we utilized $300,000 of ARPA funding to help Hideaway Village fund grinder pumps in their area. Under the contract with Hideaway Village and the sewer enterprise fund that was part of the original contract, they're responsible for upgrading, for maintaining what is on their property, which is the grinder pumps. And I've always been sympathetic because based on their usage in the system, they pay pretty high per gallon rates. But I'm, I would be very cautious at this point and about, well, free cash is probably not the option. I mean, if we were to use sewer retained earnings, that would be a, an appropriate source, but I'm concerned about going forward with that given the fact that I think this pump is functional. It's the, one of the most recently upgraded pumps. There are some things about it that need, could be updated. I'm cautious about spending retained, sewer retained earnings on this when it is their obligation to maintain this. So I'm, I'd want to think about it. Unless you could tell me that there's some savings for getting it on with the other project, that's one thing. I mean, would we consider adding it to the grinder pump borrowing that we're doing? I don't know, but I'm a little cautious about this expense at the under the sewer enterprise fund.
Thank you. Anyone else on the Select Board? Peter, go ahead.
We have to protect our retained earnings, you know, because, you know, we don't have much, you know, in that, with that balance to begin with, so we have to be prudent with what funds we have and be fiscally responsible. So I guess think it needs further discussion before we decide it, you know, the, it may, we may be able to add it on, as MJ said, to the, the other bonding issue. But I think it's something we should spend some more time with because if we do use it, then we're not leaving much for ourselves on the retained earnings side for the sewer department if we needed to, another, if we needed for other uses.
Thank you, Peter. Again, I mean, not to reiterate, I think I, I'm in agreement that, you know, we sympathetic to the plight that they need that grinder pump, but at the same time, we have depleted our ARPA funds. I think we've been very generous trying to help and support their cause. So I think it would certainly warrant further discussion and try to figure it out somehow, but I'm not sure myself either. So do you have any comments, Marlene? I know I saw your camera come up. I wasn't sure if you wanted to add anywhere.
No, I just, I just want to be very clear that ARPA is fully committed and there, and it was fully committed as of last December. So anything else beyond those two pumps would be on the rate pairs. So just want to reiterate that.
Thank you, thank you, Marlene. All right. Very good. All right, next up, unless we have any other comments, so I don't forget. All right, hearing none. We're at 227 Main Street. Three-year operational allocation review. I know, Matt, you said you had some details on this, so I'm going to pass it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this was a very small allocation we had on the, on the allocation spreadsheet. It was 79 gallons per day for sewer usage. There was a couple, and it just, it was the, it was the most recent project to pop up, needing a three-year review. This was recently made all residential. I don't have the exact date when it was made residential, but it was sometime during COVID. So I believe there was always discussions to take this completely off of the allocation spreadsheet where it became residential and put it within the residential allocation. But I just wanted to make sure the board wanted to vote to do that, and I just didn't do it internally. So there is a, one of the, one of the, one of the, not an issue, but one of the things that we came across when we were doing the three-year allocation is there's only a single meter in that building for all three, there are three units in there, three residential units. So to split any of the units out would be very difficult. So we just did the calculation based on the entire meter, just to show that they're not exceeding any allocations that they were ever granted or had historically.
Okay, all right, let's discuss that. So does any of the select board have any comments on that, or should we just bring it to a vote? Um, or does it, is it necessary to vote it? I know Matt said he was gonna. Take it from the spreadsheet. Do we need to vote to remove that, or is it something he could do? He just didn't want to just do it, is, was sort of the, the, um. The, the purpose of this agenda item. Go ahead, MJ.
If, if the residential allocation is over five hundred and fifty, doesn't it? Come under a different category?
It, it does, but this particular parcel was five bedrooms previously. And then it was, this was all done prior to the most recent rule changes to the sewer regulations. Um, so it kind of fell. In between, it seems like, as I did research into it, um. So it does fall over that, but there wasn't really new construction. They originally had five bedrooms on the parcel.
I, I think we should vote to make it part of the residential allocation. I, I mean, that's kind of my sense, like, we don't need to track it. It, I mean, they paid a fee. I mean, we could, we have to recognize that they paid a fee and. Um, but I think in terms of tracking for future allocations. Uh, I mean, it's sort of. I, I don't, I mean, obviously I wouldn't make them pay an additional fee because they paid quite a fee already, so.
All right then, so do we have a motion to remove two twenty-seven and add it to the residential allocation sheet?
To move.
All right, so moved by Jean and second by Peter?
Yes.
Any further conversation, discussion? All right, um.
Can we just keep it tracking for the original amount received for allocation? On the spreadsheet, but no longer tracked for operational? I, I'm, I really watched like how much money we've collected, and I think it's an important thing to track, so that's my only comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Melissa.
So we have a motion from Jean, second from Peter. I'll go around. It's a roll call vote, as we're online. Oh, MJ?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Melissa, yes, five zero zero.
Melissa, before you go on to the next agenda item. Um, I guess want to say to Jimmy McLaughlin, the owner of two twenty-seven Main Street, is, um, that he did an amazing job over there. Talk about a property that was in disrepair and then what they did to it, it really dressed up that property and I don't go. A week without someone's talking to me saying how much, uh, they really did a great job with it, so. It's nice to give positive feedback to the, to property owners when they, when they do spend money and people notice it and beautify our Main Street area, so. Um, great job by everybody involved with that.
Very good. Thank you, Peter. All right, uh, next, moving on, director's report. You're on mute, sorry.
Sorry about that. Just a couple of quick things. Um, we have not had any more issues with the coronary ammonia at the treatment plant. That's been running, running well. Um, we have had a few in the past three or four months foaming issues. That we've, um, changed some of the SCADA alarms around and some of the sensors to eliminate that from happening in the future. Um, and one of the other things is, um, although we are starting to do our fog inspections now that the weather has broken the fats oil and grease inspections. Um, this year was, it was much easier getting the, um. The reports and the forms from the businesses by adding it into the Open Gov system when they did their food establishment permits. So we will be doing those inspections in the spring, um, just if any businesses come up to me, I just want to let you know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, future agenda items. Um, we know that we have to. Further discuss the Bourne Scenic Park and Hideaway Village. But otherwise, does anyone else have any agenda items they'd like to see in the future? All right, hearing none, I guess I will adjourn our meeting so that we can reopen and select board, so, um.
Motion to adjourn to.
Yeah, we're actually not adjourning. We're just moving to select board.
Oh, all right, good, all right, that works. I thought we were trying to do it all legal-like, so.
This is, uh, this is the simplified sewer commissioner's select board agenda.
All right, so simplified sewer commission. I'm going to adjourn myself as chair and switch it and give the floor to MJ. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to select board business, uh, item five A. Uh, presentation and possible discussion regarding the three hundred unit forty B rental project proposed on Scenic Highway.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe the, um, proponents are represented by. Um. Uh, Mr. Peter Freeman and Mr. Brandon Carr.
Okay, um, and Sue, do you have to call a, a meeting to order?
Yes, I was just, I was just trying to find my, to raise my hand, um, thought I can't find it. So, um. Um, I'm called meeting a to order of the Bourne Affordable Housing Trust. We have a quorum of that committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to, for, I just list your members, because we have a, we have a lot of people on this, but if you want to list your present members.
That, uh, the members that have, are attending are Judy Riordan, Peter Meyer, um. Kathy Fox, wait a minute, is she still here?
Yes.
Oh, Kathy Fox Alfano and Susan Ross.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so, um, so Peter Freeman, are you, um, making this presentation and, uh?
Yeah, um, if I, if I could jump in, Brandon Carr with the pre-engineering, um, I'm here with Peter. Um, I just texted him. I, I see he's still on mute and his video's off, so I'm not sure if he stepped away for a minute.
Okay.
Actually, this.
Do you want to share screen or, I mean?
Yeah, yeah, um, he was having trouble unmuted. One sec.
Those things happen. But you should, do you have the ability to share a screen?
Yes, I will in one second. I'm just trying to.
I mean, that might be helpful, because if we try to go back and forth between the different. Between our packet and the screen, it becomes difficult. Thank you.
All right, so it seems like Peter's still having some technical difficulties, so if he hops up, there he is.
Finally.
Okay, I'm just gonna, um, say to you that, um, if you're making a presentation. Uh, with slides, would you please provide it to the town administrator for the record of our minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, so if you can hear me now, I think you can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman and the board, and Brandon. For some reason, my screen wasn't going all the way down where the unmute and, uh, turn on the video. Buttons were, so in any case, for the record, I'm Peter Freeman, attorney in Barnes and Noble, representing the applicant, and I'm going to give a brief introduction. Uh, and explain the team and what we've done, and then, uh, Brandon, and perhaps the architect will go over the other plans. So we wanted to keep in touch with the select board. We've been working with the town, uh, for quite a while informally. The, the project, which if you've looked at the packet and the agenda, it is off of Scenic Highway. It's a large site coming up at the traffic light off of Edge Hill Road. To Heather Hill Road, uh, and Ernest Valeri Road. Uh, before I say a few specific things about the project and the rest of the team, I just want to, Brian, uh, Brandon, if you go to the next slide. Just a little introduction of the LaRusso family, the developers whom you probably know. They've been very active in Eastern Massachusetts philanthropically and community engagement since the nineteen fifties. Uh, they take pride and take seriously being involved in communities, and they've sponsored a lot of recreational and community initiatives. Uh, and have made generous contributions to local healthcare organizations. And in Bourne in particular, they have responded to a request in the past. Uh, by donating computers and plasma televisions for the computer room in common areas at the Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center. Uh, they undertook repairs and repaving of Heather Hill Road when local neighbors, uh, requested, uh, help because they were unable to fund. Uh, necessary work, maintenance, and of course, that's critical for maintaining emergency vehicles and other essential services. Uh, San LaRusso answered a request from John Cogliano, who was then the State Secretary of Transportation. To provide land and access for the Bourne Dale Elementary School. The access road named Ernest Valeri Way was vital to the town's ability to build a school. And that access also enabled the development of the new DPW facility that's across from the school. And they also funded, uh, more recently, probably, the removal of the old A and P sign at the Bourne Rotary. So they've been very active and they've owned this land and they, they really are anxious to work with the town and to make this a success. Uh, the team is now, uh, visibly, uh, on the screen for you. As I said, I'm. The attorney for the project, civil engineer is Brandon Carr from DePreet Engineering. Our architect is Hans Trauch of HDS Architecture. Traffic engineer who's not here tonight is Jeffrey Dirk of Vanas and Associates. And wastewater engineer, because we do have a, a wastewater treatment plant, private wastewater treatment plant on site is Kevin Klein from Stantec. So next slide. Um, that scenario of the, of the site, you can see the Scenic Highway next to the canal, and then the road that goes up is where the traffic light is. And then it looks like a dirt road, but basically in the center where it's green, uh, thank you, Brandon, is the locus for the project. Um, and back to some of the things we did, starting over a year ago, um, different members of the team, um, met with, uh, initially your town planner. Uh, Jennifer Copeland, uh, also there have been some informal staff review meetings with members of various departments. Uh, and Jen Copeland, and we also, a couple of months ago in December, we had a meeting jointly. With the Affordable Housing Trust and the Housing Partnership, uh, to keep the town informed and to let them know what we were doing and seeking support. Uh, so, Brandon, if you go to the next slide. So this is just a quick summary, and then I'll turn it over to Brandon on the site details. Uh, three hundred residential units in seven buildings. The breakdown of the bedrooms is listed there, hundred and sixty-five one bedrooms. Hundred and five two-bedroom units, thirty-three bedroom units, and that's a good mix. Um, and I would point out that because it's rental apartments. All, uh, of the units, all three hundred will count on the times, towns S H I. And I didn't calculate exactly, but I believe that would get you either over ten percent or close to ten percent. Uh, twenty-five percent of the units will be the affordable units, uh, restricted to households earning up to eighty percent of the area median income. Uh, the access, of course, is from the Scenic Highway with the existing traffic light, which is an important, uh, factor. Um, there's going to be clubhouse and amenities throughout the site. It is public water. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have, uh, the, our own onsite wastewater treatment plant. So, uh, we think it's, uh, a win-win in that it's a good site for this type of development. Uh, Brandon will give some more details as to that. Um, it does help the town greatly in terms of increasing the need, the, uh, availability of ve- very much needed affordable housing, special, especially rentals. And again, the three hundred units would all, would all count. At the end of, uh, these slides, it indicates some next steps. Which would be, and I'll jump ahead, you don't need to go to the slide, Brandon, but we will be applying to. A mass housing under the New England Fund project, uh, and then take the various steps along the development path. So I'll stop there and, uh, turn it over to Brandon.
Thank you, Peter. Um, so in front of you, we have, uh, zoomed in site plan. Uh, we're working through our conceptual engineering now, so we've done our, our survey of the site. We've done a phase one assessment. Uh, we've done soil testing on site. We've, um. Done a traffic study for this level of development at the existing signal. So we've done a lot of the due diligence items, and now we're. We're starting to work on the site layout and, and actually get into the site engineering and preparation of a submission, hopefully later this spring, um, early summer to the zoning board of appeals. Um, but what you have in front of you is, is the, um, the proposed development, like Peter said, it's, it's three hundred build, uh, three hundred units in seven residential buildings, so there's a mixture of. Um, kind of the perimeter buildings, so you see my pointer, these four buildings are three-story buildings, and we have some elevations on the next slide, so you can see what the. Exterior of these buildings look like, and then the rear three buildings are four-story buildings, um. The three stories have between thirty and thirty-five units, and then the four stories will have fifty to fifty-five units, adding up to the, to the, um, three hundred total. Um, we tried to keep the four stories kind of interior to the site, away from the neighbors to the north. Um, the site topography also kind of drops as you go north to south, so, um, kind of stepping down that scale. Um, as you get to the rear of the, the property. Um, up front here, we have a clubhouse, um, in amenity area, so right now we're still kind of working through the programming, but. That would, um, you know, be a facility for the residents, have a fitness, um, center, there's a pool there, um, other kind of community. Uh, amenities, sometimes we do meeting rooms, uh, work from home offices. Um, little gathering space, the leasing office would be in there, um. Kind of an opportunity for maybe some outdoor recreation in that area as well, in addition to the pool, some, we're looking at, you know, potential tennis and pickleball courts. Um, given the, the location on the site, um, with especially to the, to the west and south and the, the existing cranberry bog, um, that you see here. There's opportunities to do some walking trails through the property for the residents and things like that. We have some. Ideas for, you know, landscaping, sitting areas, a dog park, uh, different things kind of scattered throughout the development. Um, the size of the development really gives us the, the ability to kind of space things out a little bit to keep that, um. Kind of spread out, uh, and, and allow some preserving of some landscaping and adding more landscaping between the buildings, so you're not just kind of driving in and seeing, uh. Kind of a dense site, so we have basically the site arranged around this, this main loop road. Um, so you'd come into the site off of Scenic Highway. Arrive at that amenity space, your first two residential buildings, kind of framing this, um, this roundabout kind of decorative tra- traffic circle. Um, as you come into the site and, and moving kind of around in, uh, I guess a counterclockwise, you, you come through this, the main loop in the back, and. As you can see, around the buildings scattered around, um, the parking near the building, so it's spread out, so it's. Again, throughout the site, but also close to the buildings that it would serve. Um, these smaller buildings you kind of see along the perimeter and, and, and areas are, um, one-story garages that would be for rental. Um, so we've kind of placed those again throughout the development, but also in areas where we can use them, um, to screen the, the butters and provide some sort, um. Kind of some breaking up of that basket of the site. Um, might be wondering why there's this hole in the center of the site, but there is actually two lots. Um, so when this was originally developed. I'll just pop back to this area, it'll kind of illustrate set, but. There's about thirty acres in the, the parcel that you're looking at today, but overall, there's close to a hundred acres that was in the eighties, all plotted out as a previous subdivision, so. Um, our piece and. All the kind of neighboring lots are all divided into one or two acre, one to two acre-ish, um. Residential lots, you know, some of them to the north, all, all on Heather Hill were developed and houses were built there, but the majority of them were never developed. Um, so these, our development consists of about. Twenty or so of those existing lots, and at some point over the years, um, these two lots were sold off, so they're privately owned, so they're not currently part of the project. We are reaching out to the. To the owners of those lots to see if we can. Obtain them back or swap them with other lots at the, the LaRusso's own around the area, but right now those two in the middle are not part of the, the proposal. Um. As Peter said, so we'd be. Uh, proposing a connection to the public water system, um, and looping that through the site. Um, stormwater would be spread out through the site, all above ground, um, great soils out here, so, you know, a mixture of sand filters, um, infiltration basins. Mostly in the rear of the site, because the topography does go, uh, does drop as you go from. East to west, so from right to left on the screen. Um, right now, we're. In the prelim, preliminary design, um, of the onsite wastewater treatment plant, so that would consist of a building, um, with some associated tanks and, and things in one area, and then one or two. Um, spots that would serve as leach fields, so we've hired, um, we're working with Stantec Engineering, who's done a lot of, um, large systems like this. Um, on the Cape and Bourne and throughout state. Um, so they're very familiar with the size. Um, so they're very familiar with the size and the permitting of these um, systems. Uh, one thing that helps us cite is we are not in a nitrogen sensitive area. Um, since the groundwater on this goes towards the canal and not to either Buzzards Bay or Cape Cod Bay. It's in an area that D E P does not map as nitrogen sensitive. So we still have to meet all the standards, but we don't have the. Kind of limiting factors that 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 brings. Guess the other thing, kind of last piece of the site layout I should point out is uh, we. There is a existing connection back to this Heather Hill Road. So you see this, what looks like a road going out there. Just want to clarify that that wouldn't be a connection for. The residents of the develop development. Um, kind of initially talking to the town, we thought that would be a good emergency access to the rear of the development if it was ever needed. So that would be gated and locked. So there would be no. Passing through of the neighbors to the north through this development using that, or there would be no exiting this development um, onto Heather Hill. All the traffic would be directed. To the main intersection here and then out to the light on Route Six. Um, and our traffic assessment um. Shows that that signal um. Can handle this type of development. It's not going to cause any safety or um, overloading of that signal or um, that intersection. So that's kind of a. An overview of the site. I'll go through to show the buildings quickly and then the next steps. And then, you know, we're here for any questions that we have. We're still, again, pretty preliminary on, but um, we have been. Taking this around for a year, year and a half and met with the town. So it is it is pretty fairly well-developed, but um, a lot of the engineering hasn't been refined yet. Um, these are some preliminary elevations of what the buildings would look like. So this is the four-story option. See a kind of a mixture of um, different materials, different colors. Um. Using the gabled roof to kind of bring down the scale. Also um, adding some relief to the the facade to break up that that mass of that building. Um, these buildings, the four-story buildings would have um, ground floor entries into small lobby areas. All the buildings um. Currently we're proposing to have their kind of own mail and package services. Um, in each building. Um, on the four-story option, these wouldn't have elevators. The next one is uh, the kind of smaller scale three-story buildings that we've located around the perimeter of the site. Um, these would not be elevated. These would be, these would have stairs. Uh, but a similar kind of look and feel, just a a story. Shorter and lengthwise also shorter. So last slide, but a- as Peter said, so, you know, we're here to. Uh, kind of introduce the project to the select board. Um, we've. Should be submitting in the next few weeks to mass housing um, for the comprehensive permit application. While that's with review of this um, under review with the state. We would be working on the. The site design and and full engineering of the site um, in preparation to submit to the zoning board of appeals, like I said, probably early this summer. That's usually a six to nine month process. Um, based on peer review and and things like that. Um, the site would also in require a a MIPA environmental notification form um, due to some of our thresholds that we hit with MIPA. So we'd be filing that at. At some point, probably as we get towards the end of the Z B A hearing. And then um. Since the wastewater treatment plant does uh, serve over ten thousand gallons per day, we. File a groundwater discharge permit with Mass D U. So um, that's kind of a a overview of the project, but like I said, um, Peter and I are here. Um, we have our architect construct. Online too, if anyone has any questions about the buildings, but we're we're excited about the project and um, you know, looking for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Brandon. So that's our presentation. And as Brandon said, here to answer questions. Thank you.
I um, I'm gonna turn it over to the select board for questions first, but um, what what water district are you in? Are you North Sagamore or Buzzards Bay?
Um, I believe we're in Buzzards Bay um, Water District.
Okay, because we don't, we don't have town water. We have like separate water districts and so. That that's um, a an important consideration because Buzzards Bay has increased their flow permit, but North Sagamore is only in the process, so.
Yes, we are in the Buzzards Bay. I should have said it's public waters. Um, and they were at. Um, as Peter said, they, we've had two, I believe, um, staff review meetings uh, over the past year and they were at the first one and we are on the agenda for the March meeting. So I imagine.
Great.
That meeting as well.
All right, we 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 try to ask about water now because it's been a.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been a holdup in some things, so it's great.
Couple of years ago, we. A couple of years ago, I did the Starbucks up on um, the other end of town at Canal Street um, and water was a. Even for a kind of a smaller user like that, water was.
Yeah, they were, they were waiting for the permit. All right, Peter, I think you have your hand raised.
I hear it by, I hear the inadvertent layout away from everybody else before I say anything.
All right, are there um, are there any questions or comments from the select board? Got to raise your hand or just announce that you want to speak because I can't really. See, because we have a screen share here.
Would you like us to take down the screen share?
Anne Marie has, no, no, I think you should leave it up. Anne Marie, did you want, yep, Anne Marie, go ahead.
Thank you, MJ. Um, with respects to those two, the the lots in the middle of the development, if you were to acquire. Those lots, would that change some of the preliminary design of the projects? I mean, what would be the purpose? Of attaining those lots? Is there, is there a purpose to attain those laws or just to have it as part of the full development?
Yeah, so um, depending on if we got one or two of those lots, um, the idea would be not to. Make the the project any bigger, but. Um, it would give us a lot more flexibility with the grading on the site and it'd allow us um, kind of what we've been thinking is to pull the northern. Building here um, further from the neighbors and kind of. Condense it and 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 increase that buffer to the neighbors to the north. Just think it would be ideal to kind of not have that hole in the middle of our site and also be able to kind of bring things away from the only butters we have.
Anybody else with a question or a comment from the board?
I was gonna ask about that as well, so thank you, like Anne Marie for that. That was my question, so I appreciate.
Peter?
Uh, one question so far is, is is there a draft pro forma available yet or is it too early in the process to to through me to look at that?
Uh, I, we understand the question. I, it's, we're working on it. It's not done yet, but I, just so you know. Uh, it would be sent to the town when we file with the state agency. It's mandatory that we would submit a copy of the entire application. To the select board, uh, and that includes the financials.
Overall, it's a great project and I, it sounds like you, you and the Mr. LaLusrow and Mr. Peterson and the rest of the group did a real great job. Um, taking the consideration of the single-family houses on the other side, you know, that a butts one portion of your project. But overall, I mean, it would be a great benefit to the community for affordable housing. But also just to, you know, just to uh. Develop that that property over there. I mean, compared to what it is now, I think. When it's all said and done, this will be a great benefit for the town. The only thing I would say is a four-story versus a three-story building. I don't, I don't know, especially on the two units that about the single-family homes. I think the three-story buildings are going to be tall enough, but if you go to a four-story building, I guess, wonder if that's gonna. If that's gonna bother those, you know, the parents. Of the those single-family houses. Because you go, you look out your backyard and all of a sudden Benny, I'm gonna be looking right out of building it to screaming. It's not big enough to to uh, shelter, you know, the building from it.
And that's why we did um, locate the three stories kind of on that northern side, producing to the the neighbors.
And um, I heard, I thought I heard you say. No elevator in the three-story, but if you do with the four-story, is there an elevator or just no elevator at all?
The four stories would have elevators.
All right, and on the three stories, if you have no elevator, are you gonna put the ADA units down on the first floor?
Um, I believe they would be located on the first floor, yes. I think they would have to be. Or they'd be all located in the elevated buildings.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions from the board? Um, so I don't, I I think. I have a question about the um. The parking lot with the garage units that it seems to be really close to the residential neighborhood. I'm not sure. I mean, I look at all these plans now and they're these dashed lines. I'm not sure what they are. That, that I think is a little bit of a concern for me. That seems close in encroachment, but that can all be worked out in the forty B process. I mean. Overall, I think the concept of the development is really good. I re, I like the idea. I think there's some things that are going to have to be worked out in the, you know, in the forty B process. But I think it overall looks to be um. And a a a nice development. I think it it looks um. It looks good. Um. Well, I think one of the things that we, that has come up is whether we would consider as a. Select board, like supporting this as a local initiative project. And I think the concern that I've heard raised is that. That puts the monitoring of the affordable units on the town instead of the developer, and I think that might be a concern. So. Oh, personally, although I think supporting the development is good, I'm not sure I want to go that direction and I'm not sure if you're really looking for that.
Uh, if I may, again, Peter Freeman, thank you for that. Um, and we're cognizant of that. Um, and we're here because we want to work with the town, but it is true. When we uh, met with the Affordable Housing Trust and Partnership, we had discussed the lip possibility. Uh, and then we were told that the town, the select board um, wanted to get some advice on forty B and have one of the state uh, funded consultants advise you, which of course is perfectly. Great, we respect that, but we just felt as though um, it might take you a little longer and that it would be important for us to move forward. So that's why we initiated the discussion for mass housing. They have the same positive opinion that. That you just expressed and some of the others. Um, so as Brandon said, you know, we've done enough work so that it's a matter of. Maybe a couple of weeks that we can file. With mass housing. But again, you have number one, we're here and number two, if you want to meet with us again, we're happy to. Uh, number three, a- as I mentioned to to um, Mr. Meyer, you do get a copy of the application and you're. Probably familiar with this from other projects, but you have a thirty-day comment period to send in comments to mass housing. So again, naturally we hope to be positive comments, but you know, we still view this as hopefully a friendly forty B, even though not a lip.
Thank you. Peter, you had your hand raised?
Uh, yes, one other question or maybe a statement is, as far as you design. The uh, the treatment facility for your project. Um, are you considering allowing the single-family homes on Heather Hill Road to tie into uh, your uh, your treatment facility? I mean, it is, it may be a nice, a good time to do it, just in case any of those single-family homes have to replace those Title Fives. Um, it may be better just to design the system and to make it more affordable by having those single-family homes tie into it. It's just a consideration I'm just thinking about.
Yeah, and and we've heard that. Um, I think the Housing Trust um, and uh, and it's definitely something that we're going to keep on our radar and look into as we. Develop our um, design of that system.
Okay, uh, Sue, do you have any um, questions or any questions from people on your committee?
Want to say that we we did um, have a meeting with and had and had this presentation. And and just like you, we were very impressed with how it was. Um. We we like the amenities. We like the way they're trying to um. You know, screen as much as they can and and they seem very willing to work with us. We had a few things that we discussed with them and they seemed willing to talk about, and I'm sure like what you said, it'll go. Into the final thing, but um, for example, I mean, we're always concerned with the affordability. Um, and we wanted to do, you know, since it was going to be at eighty percent, and I'm sure mass housing or somebody's going to try and get that down. But we would almost like to have, you know, have a little bit of workforce housing included in it. Because that's, you know, we don't know yet the prices or um, what the rent's going to be. So maybe the rent. Is going to be workforce affordable, but um, we wanted to see something like that. We were concerned about the security and the cameras and they assured us that they had that and that that was going to be a live-in person. Uh, manager on the premises, which, which was really good. Um. We, like what Peter said, we were, you know, wondering if the single-family homes could tie in. To the um. You know, to the system, uh, to the treatment system. And um, let me see, it was something, oh, and we we discussed the lottery. We. Would really like Housing Assistant Corporation to work with the lottery and and they're willing to discuss that. So. Ev- everything that we asked, they had, you know. They, if they didn't have the answer, they were willing to work with us. So we're, we were happy with that and I'm sure there's a lot more. The select board and us and the Z B A will have to do, but I. I felt like we were going to be able to work together, so I was pleased with that.
Okay, anyone else from your committee have a comment or question?
Hi, it's Kathy. Um.
Hi Kathy.
Wearing my multiple hats, I also asked if we could have a satellite public library as part of this plan.
That's right, yeah.
So I want to make sure that's on the record. That's all.
I'm with you.
Okay, um, a- a- any other questions or comments from the board or the public? I don't think we need to make any kind of motion tonight. I mean, I think the sense of uh, my sense of the select board is they're supportive of the project. We look forward to working with you through the friendly forty B. Process and um, being able to comment and um, I think it looks, I think it looks like a great um. Uh, development for the town of Born. So I appreciate you coming forward and working with us and making the presentation, so.
Thank you very much and we appreciate your giving us the opportunity and we will follow up as we all have said. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, Gene, you want to say something?
Yeah, I couldn't get my hand up, sorry. I'm here, sorry. Um, yeah, I just wanted to add that it's a very thoughtful design and I do appreciate the um. Uh, thinking about the neighbors and the other. Uh, the single-family homes behind it and the treatment of the buildings too, so it doesn't have that. Look of a big mass structure with the different textures and colors and everything that that definitely makes it more. Um, appealing and um, I just can't help but have my planning hat on a little bit, but. Um, I think we also have to be thoughtful of the um. The traffic mitigation, not only are people needing to be using the lights and Valeri, but people tend, you know. In the summer, when it's busy on the canal, they do cut through the other neighborhoods. And I think we have to be mindful of the people that are dealing on a regular basis with everyone cutting through um, Valeri. To get over there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Sue, do you need to, you want to adjourn adjourn your meeting or?
Yes, I'd like to um. Adjourn the meeting of the Born Housing Trust. Is that all I have to do?
Yeah, if you all leave, it's adjourned by lack of quorum. That's our way of doing this.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Thank you so much for letting us be here.
So thank you for coming.
Thank you all. Good night.
Good night, thank you. Uh, okay, um. Next item on the agenda is future agenda items related to correspondence and other items for discussion. Um, we we have in our packet. Some laying out of meetings and there's a couple of things I want to talk to the board about. One is um. So that SciTech Committee has been requesting. That we write some sort of a letter. Um, regarding the. Um, underserved areas. And there's been a little bit of change. Comcast actually wrote to us and asked us to write a letter of support. So um, I didn't put it on the agenda for tonight. But I um, I think we might want to put it on our agenda for March fourth and I just don't know how, I just want to make sure the board's. Good with having that discussion on March fourth. Any comments on that? Yeah?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a suggestion at this point in time that. Just to have an understanding of what's going on, a lot has changed with N B I with respects to the gap funding. Just to have an understanding of what's going on, a lot has changed with MBI with respects to the gap funding and with the bead funding. And I think it's important for the select board to have an understanding of how that's going to impact the town. As well as, you know, when, when these entities are reaching out to us with letters of support and our ability to really, um, navigate what's in the best interest of, 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 of the town, what's going to benefit us the most. Um, and I know Comcast isn't the only one I think I will be hearing from, uh, possibly Open Cape for a letter as well.
So, I'm, I attended the last SciTech meeting and they raised some questions about who was eligible and I think that some of that needs to be ironed out. So I'll, I'll put that on the agenda for the 4th. The other question that I kind of wanted to discuss with the board is, um, there's a group of people that are, uh, proposing a citizen's petition for a fertilizer ban. And, uh, for the annual town meeting. And when I first spoke to them about it, I said, well, maybe the select board could m- make it, uh, sponsored by the select board, so if there were changes that wanted to be made by the Conservation Commission or others, that we would have an opportunity to do that, once you have a citizen's petition, you can't make any changes. I'm not sure we have time for that, so I'm not sure what the sense of the board is. I can just tell them to submit their citizen's petition or would you like to hear them before it's filed? And maybe do that on the March 11th meeting, which I'm planning to do the March 11th meeting for CWMP. So, any thoughts on that? Do you have any thoughts on that, Marlene?
I don't, uh, I don't think that it, it would be reasonable for the staff to pull together a thoughtful bylaw in advance of town meeting. I, I just don't think that we can do that.
Right, so they have a proposed bylaw that's based on the Falmouth bylaw that they're proposing as a citizen's petition. So I, I'm not expecting anyone to draft anything, I just, when I started thinking about the schedule, that it seemed, you know, maybe we let them go for it as a citizen's petition and then if it's, you know, if it's accepted, it's accepted. Really, uh, you know, maybe if we had comments, we could make motions to town meeting or something if we had something, so. There's, um, they would, uh, they will have to present it to the select board at some point in time and maybe we'll do it on that M- March 11th meeting, which, just so that they can present it to us because it's a, it will be a Warren article that they need to present. Does that sound like a good plan?
Let them go ahead with the citizen's petition, I think that's what we should do, yeah.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So all of them presented as a citizen's petition and I'll look to the March 11th. And, um, the other thing we have coming up, um, the Southside Fire Station is, um, uh, hopefully planning to do a presentation to us on April 1st with, um, the proposal for the Southside Fire Station for the special town, for the town meeting. Okay, anybody else have anything they want to discuss or have put on an agenda? Marlene, do you have your hand up?
Um, may I please have some information about March 11th? Is, is that an evening meeting?
No, we, we talked about it, you said you wanted the 3:00 PM, I think I confirmed with everything that everyone on the board that they could do the 3, 3:00 to 4:30 meeting on March 11th, it's kind of a workshop to talk about like what feedback we got on the CWMP and, and then maybe just to do this quick thing on the bylaw.
I, I will be traveling back at that time.
Yeah.
My schedule, so, um.
Do you want us to make it a little bit later or you said, I think you said that you were okay, you thought you could do it, but I know Marlene had difficulty doing the evening, so.
Right, just, yeah, move forward with it and I'll, I'll jump in, you know, when I'm on the ground and have the ability to, uh, zoom in.
Well, well, yeah, if your flight's delayed, like, yeah, you'll.
And is, is the, is that something that you would like me to try to have Helen Gordon attend? Because this is not on her calendar.
Um, I, 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 um, I would say y- y- yes, if she can attend. I do not see discussing the CWMP comments on March 4th. I think that having the, getting the comments and being able to read through them and then having a workshop kind of discussion on the 11th is kind of where we need to go.
So I will see if Helen is available at 3:00 PM on March 11th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, for the chair?
Yes, Peter.
If we do have Helen come, are we spent on our consulting money, will we have to pay for that out of the budget somehow or?
I think there's a little bit more money, I mean, unless you guys just want to talk about the comments yourselves and just make a plan without her. I don't, you know, but there is a little bit more money, correct, Marlene? About seven grand left?
Y- yes, this is, I mean, this would be, there is scope in the current contract for her to review the comments with the board. Um, this would be that opportunity, we wouldn't necessarily be able to do it again.
So see if she's available, if she is, we'll have her like do the preliminary thing and get her take on it. And if not, we'll just have the discussion and meet with her after we review. Okay. All right, um, uh, next is upcoming meeting dates, um, for the select board, 3/4, 3/11, 3/18 and sewer 3/25. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa. It's a roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Any votes, yes, thank you very much.